...organization to prepare the forum. And in my opinion, it should be Andrew Black, New York Council, and the target for their financial responsibility to be finished. We could not pull this off without him. Now let's review this afternoon's forum for our candidates and the audience. The questions that I will ask, you are developed ready in the ACP, Blackberry, and Loudlight Nurse. Each candidate will receive, I hope, not a candidate, yes, maybe. Received the questions in advance. Each candidate will have a specific amount of time to answer the questions. Our time to deal will let the candidates know when they have fifteen seconds left to respond, and when the time is up. We respectfully ask that each candidate stay within their time required for each question. I will rotate and get to answer the questions. Then the next person will answer and go on. The seating arrangement that we have today was determined randomly by drawing names. There will be no additional questions from the audience. Instead, we have asked the candidates to stay after, for, after the formal question, and answer during informal meeting groups and additional age groups. We will not judge their consumption. That will take place out in the hall. Blackberry, the NWAACP, and Loudlight cannot ignore candidates. But the candidates are free to hear campaign materials, speak volunteers, and answer additional questions in formally during this time. Now let me introduce our Florence City Commissioner candidates. In order seated, we have Amber Sellers, Dustin Selvin Bear, Justin Ian Burton, Orly Shippley, and Mike Dever. Thank you so much for your presentation. Blackberry is not able to attend the forum today, but he wanted to end up the marriage in his absence. I am disappointed to miss this opportunity to answer the questions with the Florida Lawrence Grant of the NAACP, Blackberry, and Loudlight. I apologize for my absence, but I am in Boston visiting my youngest daughter, who is at Boston University for an important event to improve her college career. But I would like the group gathered to know that the talents that people bring forward from diverse communities and lived experience make communities stronger. And it is my deep desire to do the work to support opportunities that increase autonomy. I invite anyone who has questions for me about my analysis or approaches as a commissioner, to please feel free to reach out to me directly. That was a statement we submitted prior to today. So with that being said, let's begin. The first question we will begin with, Commissioner Anderson. What have you found is facing the Lawrence City Commission? And how would you address those challenges?
We are truly ready. Yeah, everyone. Say thank you, NAACP, Loudlight, Blackberry, for this afternoon's forum. I'm looking at the representation, but I think some of the challenges that we face are actually opportunities. And they're opportunities because they're with economic development. We call them in the cities to be planned, prosperity, and environmental security. If we can secure equity and access and economic development, economic support after the place begins, after the place to small business, the virgin business, the whole entire ecosystem, we're moving our community in a way that we are addressing gaps. And the gaps that we recognize, that they are gaps that, we've been taking before, but outside of council, we'll talk about that later. What we are seeing, we're understanding the nuances and robots that we are experiencing in how to bring about new businesses, how to acquire space for businesses, and how to bring individuals into the economic or entrepreneurial ecosystem. And so if we continue to move that way, we have to look at innovation in current policies that we have, as well as innovation in new opportunities of government incentives, government policy, using that. So we have to keep track of this in the jobs and that, as well as being for urban development, and as well as different economic goals that we are trying to achieve.
Hello, I'm here with a couple of things that we have major issues facing our city. One of the main ones that's been going on since that first ran in 2017 and before then is housing. The amount of housing we have here, the price of housing, and where the housing is located throughout our community. And that's something I know we're going to have to work on, and that's something that's currently being addressed with our land and it could, but that's something that we're going to have to get out of what's interested in the individuals. And we want this housing to be able to supply our commercial enterprises and wanting to really build that up in our town if you want it. Place to live. People want to start business, but they can't have any employees live here. They're not going to get them. They're not going to have any customers who can afford to live here either. Because we're also having an issue with the four thousand stock. And so these are some of the things that we can work to address, some of their bottom code, and also being possible with our private incentives. And being willing to be open to how it uses sort of benefit of the community. And though incentives package have a real negative image in this town. And so number one, we would have to really not sell it, but ask the questions that your role wants to know to make sure it's public as possible with these things, so that everyone feels we're all about that. And that we aren't being a sugar rush community that has had it before. And these are some of the things that I think I am bringing, addressing some of the issues, is that willingness to put it down and not let us off.
I'm kind of on the same page when it comes to that. We do need more businesses here in Orange County. Down in kind of specialty, I think, we need some businesses. I think, for me, if we, I don't see a healthy community if everyone in the community is prosperous. And like Sal was focused on these forests and North Forests as well. Those are places that are just like there. And seems like everybody is getting the thought that they are there. But that is, I think, North Forests is a, one of the needs to Lawrence, being prosperous. But as I say, no, we do need businesses, minority businesses, all kinds of businesses here to be able to have a healthy community. So that's what I see.
Yeah, the first one I want to mention, I think, is a political challenge. And I think we're meeting it, and that's operationalizing our district plan. The district plan was created by the Department of Public Publicity. There is this amount of public engagement that we've ever had on a study or a project. And we're very proud of that. But we do have to operationalize it so that we reflect our commitment to the outcomes. And that's actually, you can work it, it's homework, it's a good thing, but you also have to be critical of your citizens, because you guys are making a roadmap. You have to be able to look back at the year before and go, yeah, we could have done that a little bit better. And that's actually a quality issue before in your representative's ability to go back and reselect and then see how they could do better. Another thing I wanted to challenge, not a city challenge, but the question was a city commission challenge. And I would like to share this with the public, because it's not always obvious to people on comment committees very often. And that is our trend that has the expectation and the desire for public comment and public engagement within our civic and disruptive behavior. And then the word, because so many people have expressed to me that they're afraid to come to city commission meetings because of this unbehavior. And abusive speech, abusive behavior. And this is not only bad for the public comment, but also for people in your room, because it's the experience tomorrow, so you got to have people, not let everyone miss this paper.
I think the first, the biggest challenge that as far as the virus is the Latin four housing, or housing and affordable housing that's there, it's people who will be eligible. I think we need to balance and provide those kinds of options to people that we're able to provide more service to the community. Because right now, the second most, the largest problem is the unhoused and transient community kind of being looming large in a lot of people's minds. And a lot of city funds, capital funds are being spent in the true development issues. Right? I think that's one problem I'd like to try to help with. Reducing the tax burden on communities is something that I think we need to focus on as well, because it's just not the fault of the house, it's all utilities and taxes that's helping with that. And I think we have intermittently raised ours, so I feel that's become affordable. And I think the way we can do that is let all the great money we've sent, this initiative we've sent, others that said, infrastructure, utilities, to bring in new jobs and new opportunities to the community, so that we can spread all these costs over a larger base and not be focused so much on, I would say, that we're going to be paying the load. But I think sharing our goal with everyone is pretty important to do.
Thank you. So our second question will begin with that, so I'm waiting here. Now would we balance the interest of unhoused individuals with the community? And business interests?
Currently, there is the community plan out there for everybody, maybe planning to end homelessness. There's SGC public input, not only directly from the business community, but from members of the community at large and in the unhoused community. There is a lot of programs and initiatives that have been co-opted into that plan or being addressed. Through the Washington Community Shelter, through BURGAD, through the Sporting House, County Assembly. There's a lot of programs that are also being discussed to put in place. And what is going on in the sub-40? These are all under the hard tax dollars, all of it's a pain. And this is the health of the house. So where is the balance coming in? Where helping folks who are down, being able to find connection to services, transitional housing being put in place? And we're finding ways to expand other ways to help these individuals at the community shelter, mostly with a productive co-government structure that's soon to be available. Thank you.
I think that we need to focus, I think, on the unhoused individuals and talk to them, see what their demands are. I don't know, I got to talk to people. So being able to find out what it is they actually want, actually believe, I think would be something that would be helpful. I think we also need to have them understand that there are rules and regulations that we've had in our town. And that thinking that our town is not, is not everything for anybody. Even when it happens, it's going to get cold. So being able to find a place for these people to be able to have a warm place to stay, I think that's something that we need to look at as well. And we have to understand also that we people have homeless people that really might want to be housed.
I think that's a direction of our plan. In the immediate, what we are trying to stay focused on is creating a path of homes. And the purpose of that is to get people out of all our perks and thrills. The balance we lost there is that people don't feel like everyone who's the perks and thrills, people are just the beginning, can't be on that. And that's a fair criticism, so that's why that's one of our first priorities. Secondly, I don't know, we should talk about residency requirements before you say it. I know it's problematic, I know it's problematic. But we need to have that conversation with the community because of the times. They realize our reasonable expectation of understanding where their funds go and how that, how this one's a circle. And then the third thing is, we need to have a little, I think there's a real problem that conflating hand downs members and what's happening on Massachusetts. There are people who sit there all day, but you can sit there all day. So that's not community, and we need to have a conversation about what that is.
So I've been thinking about this issue for a long time, several years, since I've had some personal problems that I want to try to solve. And I kind of look forward to examining the resource that we're currently spending on all the services that are applied to the unhoused, transients, people who are in need. I think those are, and that's something I would want to understand. It's a little bit determining the actual cost for the services to the citizens, because I think that is not clear. I think transparency will make everyone buy into this plan in the future. We all know what it's costing us, we're all coordinated, we're all together. And people are all, either interacting, their time, their money to this, are working in the same direction. I think that's what I think a city commission can do and help lead a short-term strategic plan. I recognize as a long-term plan that we are in need of a short-term strategic plan, we press. What we got, where they came from, how we're going to serve them, and how we're going to have them get into a position where they can be a productive member of our town versus the others.
Thank you. How can City?
You might have a message, but I'm more than one thing, but I would say this. The value of our relationship and it's not about you, maybe whether they're religion, you step back, addressing the needs of that house speaks to everyone. It speaks to access, it speaks to availability, and acceptability, availability, and accessibility of reason with them. Availability, and accessibility of health, availability, and accessibility of funding, and large teams. And so for that, you might have laws, the needs that we have in our community is not only size shit song asking about it. I mean, the research on the state level, I can give you the sense that you learn that you know about. And that's not a fact, that's just facts. That's my background, that's the work that I've done, that's the work I continue to do. But what we have to understand is that the better control is, is about recognizing the roles that we can do on the locals. And the songs of the living, being listened to, those in state level, and we've not been asked in the state to spell differences of, and the fact that anyone what they even doing to help us, to help us make this, for help, to help us build and create a building that is essential in this human world, we need a house to have.
Thank you. How can City mention this here access to affordable housing? We will begin with that.
See, I would like to see affordable housing in all areas of Lawrence. I'm just pointing to one section of Lawrence, sections of Lawrence. And therefore, my housing, I'm still trying to wrap my head around what that means. So I've got no questions and answers, but affordable housing, like, you know, I'm thinking of a family, a single mother and children that are looking for some place in the state for her kids. So that's kind of the way I think affordable housing. Also, affordable housing means, you know, I haven't heard anybody put a number on, put that would be, you know, as far as rent, so that's something else that I can think about. I think affordable housing being, you know, it might be ten, four hundred and fifty dollars a month instead. A thousand dollars a month. So that's affordable housing to me. But I think everything kind of goes downtown for its housing. But I think we need to spread it out and really make it possible for everyone to, I think.
So the city's role so far has been in creating the housing units and averaging our affordable housing trust dollars. We've already funded five hundred units, maybe more than that, to be created over the next five years. And so we need to continue doing that. Then that's already more or less accomplished by our partners, such as Woodlow or Housing Authority or Tenants Home Members. And I have to wrap this up, because a lot of the, a lot of the achievement is given to some of the units that have, maybe school owners are presentable, and they certainly feel put upon in that neighborhood. But if you actually are able to find a map, which the houses we already can show you, you'll find that it's actually more spread out than you would imagine. Because some of those higher residents or even the units that are held by domestic leaders that are sort of addressed that, and nobody, nobody should know where those units are. So there are some people that you think they are, but absolutely there do need to be sprinkled all over, even in the west side of town.
So I think we should start by continuing to spend, say, that dollars in the city to start that with a place we were trying enough to go along with, with a place for affordable housing. I think they've dug your child, I'm sure especially in that money, how it's community, getting into our partners. So you mentioned that really you're good at executing these plans and making them available as soon as possible. I think we need to make sure that building code modifications are made in the plan that we're talking about being completed soon. This is a plan I'm changing all the time, really, and it's going to be done. So I think it's going to add some density for all of us, it's going to add some choices for all of us, it's going to allow us to use lots of them, and we pour the sand. So I know the city has been pushing forward with that initiative. We could encourage standardization, anxiety, that allows us to build new construction with affordable housing built in and incentivize any other housing that we can in those areas.
I appreciate a lot of the previous chairs that helped my guests. We are making strides in building housing. One, we have the ongoing inclusion of the draft, the wind development code, and it's online with that. And that's to explain, we need to start looking at our housing policies and how they look in our economic development plan for the city. We have to recognize the state granted us on being able to mandate, should they mandate, a herd, including our son. That's why the state on housing, it has to be a relationship with the private market group and the city we're going to contribute. So we have to be working on the private relationship with this and utilizing the state to say, hey, you got a chairman that knows things on housing. We have the market to take care of the market, right? We have HUD to take care of local income. But that, and it seems, no, it's not support. So we need them there. Judging the answer to the question, affordable housing, anything that's more, if it's more than a burger or a sliver of anything, it's not affordable. It's more than a chicken, so when it comes to utilities, it's not affordable.
Thank you, Commander, for questioning utilities. That's actually what I was going to talk about, but we talked about the stock, we talked about the landing code. Utility bills are actually a factor when we determine affordable housing. And as we continue as a city commission to determine how to take care of infrastructure for the whole city, we have to calculate utility bills as a portion of our affordable housing cost when you're discussing this. And when we don't, if we don't, we really never actually going to address affordable housing. And what is going to be chasing after this constantly saying? We have to build out, we need to build new infrastructure, we need building pipes. Well, guess what? The rest of us still got to pay for that. And the more we got to pay for, well, people in these last few years, well, the less people we can put inside of the city, because the more taxes we all have to bear and build more infrastructure. And we should have these utilities. Utility bills will all continue with. And so that's why I asked to be a part of this conversation, the yard of affordable housing.
Thank you. This next question will begin with Fordy. What can the city commission do to prepare for the Panasonic plan expansion?
So some of the things that we've already done is to try to identify industrial base Uh, so some of the things that we've already done is to try to identify industrial base for some of the smaller under Panasonic related, and, uh, the, uh, attract them. Um, uh, not just for, you know, uh, by approaching them, but also by kind of teaching them about who the words is, marketing ourselves to them. Um, uh, if we could capture one or two of those, that would be a huge success. That would bring us jobs and also, you know, it does for the land, it's tax-free, I mean, a rate. So that would help with our tax burden on, on the residential, uh, side, which is the most of us. Um, we've also been making an attempt to leverage our, you know, the way we market ourselves, explore Lawrence, to try to reach out to some of the higher suits, uh, and some engineers that will come in these work with, trying to get developed. And make sure they understand that we are being cultural and artistic points to read and that we're right nearby and that they can come and spend time and money in our small businesses. And I think that would really catch some of that, I don't know, in the future.
If, while we keep this around the existing ways of construction, the step that we're giving that we're anticipating this, on time, when we've built up that some of the subdivisions at least are in play, that we're kind of try, uh, capture some of the, uh, residential housing that might be suited with the Panasonic plan. So I'm gonna focus upon what we can do, like, start finishing out annex, annexing the land and venue land for, uh, new developments, so we can offer places for people to live. Um, we could offer letters for our existing office, and that's the one R and D statement we have, you know, K Y P is really just an example of partnerships that, um, can, um, really shut down the expert, um, technical people we have in here, and that would draw serious focus, people like to hang on if they can. Oh, that's one, usually we can move in the already, um, uh, approved capital, uh, move improvement plan, and so I think that's gonna be the need to help us do some of the things we want in the future.
The guy that's, yeah, it's a guy with a girlfriend and a couple that's flying, and it's a girl. So he's looking back at the girl and the girl's trying to figure that out. Then his girlfriend's looking at him, who are you, or she not? So, and this example, this, the guy in the city, the girl that he's looking at is Panasonic, and their girlfriend is the city, there are people in our community. If we get too sidetracked in what we need to do for Panasonic, then we lose sight of things we need to do for a people in this community. By addressing the things that we're doing now, we are preparing ourselves for Panasonic. In addition to that, we need to start thinking outside of, there are other things that will come in addition to Panasonic. How are we positioning ourselves for that? Might talk about, uh, with, with expansion, uh, with the expansion, et cetera, X, they got a day right now, because we have a baby, you know what I'm on about? So staying there, but also looking at resources very hard and, uh, you, if we stay on track with that, we are protected to do the, the, we do to prepare ourselves against.
That's right.
That's why I love the process, getting me to school people and interacting with them, we have to try to do them, and going under this, how, that Lala and Andrew were saying that our land development code is setting us up for success going forward. We really could look at using more, make sure to develop some of these, uh, hermitry orders to take advantage of this, as there will be, getting out on twenty third street, especially when, uh, worse than Panasonic, what's out there, bringing people in. Also allows the advantage of people being closer to where they're working, which then, we were talking about taxes earlier, management earlier, more people have living, more people that can have area of that tax burden, which will also rest in us. This also will allow us to not only, this is another question, Commander, that I thought is, we're talking about the cultural icons in the region that we are not ready, but if we can build up these places for people of color to handle these things, we can really build on this cultural icon that is more, more ready for people.
Building, oh. There's some, and you are close to the Lawrence, uh, Panasonic, so we really don't know how many of these vehicles are passing from Lawrence, and where they want to live is somewhere inside two thousand miles. And I don't think con executives will want to live in an apartment. I think putting the interest of unknown before the interest of the community, it doesn't necessarily go with you. So, I think if we, if we build for the future of our community, then anybody that comes in will be included in that as well.
Thank you. This next question has very good to me. Growing up as a child with two minority or two reverse to the continent, um, so really excited about this question, and we will look forward to the answers. So knowing that minority-owned businesses are essential to our community's health and culture, what will you do if elected to better serve our needs and concerns? Will begin this from me.
I think, uh, your job is, you know, that's, is communicate. And I think what I would do is try to communicate all of the opportunities that have become available to entrepreneurs, and it's a small business owner who's around Douglas County. Um, I think there are, great, I have to be, with a place, it was a flat month, we put in place a, it's served by Douglas County program to help serve people who need help, can't get other funds to loan, up to fifteen thousand dollars, and that's a great start. I think there's other programs, places as well for Douglas County where entrepreneurs can get now, because they're front to forty-five or fifty thousand dollars. But now, no worries, maybe, no, sign off, it's a guarantee, it's extra money. I think the city needs to communicate all these opportunities to people, because I didn't know about any of them until I started with rocks. And I think without knowledge, then they had no power, and I'll give people power to flourish, especially, um, minority-owned and small business owners who really struggle with this kind of condition.
What I would say is, not one of the, what I have done these last few years, in addition to those minority businesses, is recognize the policies and act in order to do different. And if we do, like, mindset, and we've had this conversation. Yes, it's important for, it's important for all commissioners to understand that. If you leave the same, these are educated community, and you don't know about that community, you're the first one to make a change yourself. And that's, again, not a flex, that's one, uh, understanding and recognizing your community. So understanding what policies are out there. We have several policies available to us in a human right now, that we can be looking at, reimagining. Our community development, what, where in this one area, and other communities, other businesses, how we shoot that to these dollars and access for, for minority-owned businesses. We also need to make space in these spaces. It's about not being performative, but recognizing that sometimes the role of, of the state is not to be in the front, but to be the one who can be, have the platform for access to these groups.
Thank you. You have to be at least integrated, a part of that community, to really be able to help members from that community. And I think as a Native American, we are intentionally kept out of opportunities. It's, it's designed that way, the systems are designed that way, it's, uh, the challenge is pointing out to. And what I would look at, again, is not only how can we help individuals, we don't speak to the individuals across this community to help to be aware, as Mr. Dev was saying, because, who's blind? Some white man tells me, and I, this is how it is. But if someone who's a person of color, like, last week's, uh, I've talked, entrepreneur workshop that Taylor hosted, was an amazing experience for me to hear other members of my community have their knowledge base, and also feel that I know my question for being asked by someone that I can trust and who actually would announce me. And so what, what I do is try to give those spaces to help and let people be aware of it within those communities. Thank you.
Well, as someone that, uh, is owner and founder of a non-hogile organization here in Lawrence, I can say how you, you are, uh, minorities are left out. And it's kind of, you know, when it comes to getting, uh, getting, uh, any kind of assistance. But anyway, no question of that. Um, I guess the first thing I, I would, I'd like to do is just sit down and talk to individuals that want to start a business. See where they're coming from, see exactly what it is that they want and need. I'd also like to be able to be a partner with some kind of, uh, bank or credit union here in Lawrence to get some kind of a incentive package offered, one of the businesses that owns this, well, okay, that's what I'm.
So, um, the city over the years has incentivized, um, very, already wealthy business owners, um, uh, with, uh, all kinds of incentives, uh, and so it is entirely possible to use the same, um, kinds of ideas and certainly the same, you know, economic level and current to start high overhead spending, uh, people who actually need incentives to do the money, to do the projects. Um, and it's just very simple, um, we just fund projects that are set up. Uh, that's our job, is to find, we can, we can fund art, we can fund small, we can fund small businesses that, um, are, are primarily, um, started by people of color, when we don't have access to be accountable. Uh, that's just a priority to make and, and we will make it, you know, especially the next two, our, should be very tight out there. Thank you. What you consider to be the community's role, meaning always oversight, you have the knowledge of the end.
So I want to say that when it comes to policing, that there's a lot of accounts. After, and some of these is social justice, when you were on a, a revolution there, of the, when social justice was, and we started, and to map out the role of community and police oversight. Now, in other terms, part of a bigger continuum, uh, just the role of police in our community. So part of the community policing, having our relationship, so community, so our, our law, of the state offices, having that meaningful relationship with the neighborhood associations versus influence versus, and the community, that elevates us to have another pathway into, uh, accountability, which is for our police officers, that is for our C P R V. So we are really charged with that, that is not, uh, a policy that, I think, is in its final stages, it is in its developing stages, and that, having to continue forward with what we look at community policing, that will understand how to, uh, forehand for them for C P R V.
What I consider to be the community's role, the police oversight. So, being, what I've done is I've participated in a few police trial logs with the Lawrence, Kansas Police Department. I've also gone and did Douglas County Sheriff's Office Citizen Academy to get a firsthand view of what those people are doing who are starting to visit our towns and villages, and also trail them, to see their policy procedures, and count out all the other states of this. I've also sat and listened to many citizens throughout the community, not only at C P R V, but also the correct citizens work group, to hear their perspectives on how they felt they were being pleased in this community. That way I could have a broader idea of how our community is feeling, and also the police have given us issue too. Because we, as the city commission, are gonna have to listen to all parties, not just one side, not just the other, and that's how we're gonna form our policy and really hearing that. And so, I would like more of the community to set up a name, well, it's scary, I know it can be, it's threatening almost to be around the police, but if we have, if you have a bird's eye, you can see firsthand what they are doing today, we're easier to do the main policy, of course. Thank you.
Um, about a couple of years ago, I had this officer follow me in nineteen hundred Harvard, student, went into mass to my office, uh, and stopped, and, and just kind of stared at me until I got into, into my building. Uh, that's here. And, uh, so to me, I think we need to have a political oversight, for some, please, some of the, some of the, do a lot, but we still have those new, the light and the rest. So I'm looking at, I think we need to make sure that police are protected and certain with immunity and that's talking to the rest.
Why, can I give you a answer to the question that you asked? Um, uh, I do think that the, with this community, for community, this moving forward, that's the work that you get them. Um, it's certainly a rock and start. Um, I do think the community has a place there to work, um, in police oversight. Um, I'd love to see the community please really more reviewing actual policy, and, you know, I have worked with some of the personnel of L C P looking at, the whole police manual operating, little notes next to every little thing, what I think could be different. Uh, so I think that's really part of working, it needs to be done, using, don't mind them, to give us some recommendations. Uh, I think they should be reviewing the data that we're already collecting, and giving us some recommendations on that. Uh, they should be able to review complaints, um, understanding, of course, the experience of enrollment, uh, whether, uh, they're not, this will be bad.
So I think the community is the ultimate governor of what the police needs to be, need to be doing in our community, ultimately, we are the ones who decide, because we're the ones paying the taxes, when we're in charge of their overall, um, pay. So I think, and you think that's a great statement, what happens, I think, um, with the, that is under the, we should be more, I believe that that is a separate word, to be only who, who needs, or what I'm out, that the people ask for, and they got it. The question is, the effectiveness of the, I can see all that, police should be more in what they can and cannot review. And then to me, I believe in thorough and clear and transparent operations, I would like a board that has actual authority and power for them to put together great people to consider great things. We need to have the authority and the decision-making ability to actually do something, and to, uh, we have that, it's a force to have.
Okay. Next question. In what ways do you think that the community of government and its processes are more transparent to encourage constituents to participate? Is correctly those from historically marginalized groups, this might be what we named a testing?
Just the other week at the planning commission, I walked away and standing on the shoulder of a brown-skinned individual, reporting, and so he got up and left, and then she sat and smiled. How can we make processes more transparent? Number one, those who run the meetings, you have full control, we retire in that space and be aware of what's happening, the cage or the new controls are happening in that space, whether it's, we're leaving that room, or in the foyer where people are sitting and attending and listening to that beat also. And I think this is the place where it's, planning commission meeting, uh, discussion of not only the Lawrence, Kansas having a presence, but also the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, since the planning commission is located by the town of Kansas City. And I would like to remind everyone, when our city does record these meetings, does post them on YouTube, then you can't participate in some, as the state even better, I can do that regularly. But we need to have control, as Corby said, not only of people who are screaming in public comment, but how many treatment of people, and they are feeling used, saying.
For me, I think, uh, being able to talk with people is the main thing. Again, talking and listening is very important. Uh, don't be dismissive from talking to someone. Be transparent about what's going on. People just want to be able to sometimes find a way that they are able to help, because it's their community as well, and they just want to be able to have some kind of input. So I'd say, listen more and give, give somebody that, uh, gives somebody that platform to help, you know, we do have enough people in this town that would help in any way they can.
Um, I think Lawrence already has, delivers on a pretty high expectation of transparency. Uh, we look really hard to expand our engagement, uh, to give our attention to marginalized communities. Uh, sometimes we have to look for people who are not involved in local government, or never been involved in local government. As later, I was very focused on filling more appointments with, uh, new people and fresh perspectives. Uh, we need, uh, we're very powerful interest groups, we did not let that, um, uh, but I was keen to just looking for new people, uh, all ages, all backgrounds, and making sure we didn't have, absolutely, we didn't have all white boards, all low-key white boards. We captured all the data on the demographics of the people on our boards, and, uh, I was not having any more of that. So, um, uh, and then, last, we have thirteen seconds left. Uh, occasionally, we have to find a way to, uh, actually pay people with marginalized backgrounds to do any of these boards, because they are single parents and don't have childcare, et cetera, et cetera, and they need to support it.
So, when, as I was on the city, it was really just me, it's very technical to get people to fit into one board, because we mostly didn't know that there was companies, or they didn't know how to buy that, and I think, um, transparency starts with making openings, or it's not, so we just join the city to make our own decisions. So I think the city does a very good job there, of trying to target minorities or certain group of people who want diverse opinions from, we should go ask them, so we should look at our demographics, the city knows everything about us, we can easily mail out information to people who are, one, they may have, uh, showed the desire to participate in that, and, uh, so, yeah, they can get their own, and I think part of, um, getting involved is knowing about the actual, yeah, I think, once we see who they're available, I think it, it becomes, I think we need organized voters, we need organized votes on board issues, we need organized votes on topics for the community, and for those people that are marginalized. And I think if we do that, we can empower groups to make change through the elections and through the presence on boards.
Well, government, that's still good, and not further reading, this is the basis of co-government, or, or, only often traditional community engagement approaches, it often defaulted, and lacks the relevance of inclusivity. Now, some of you all have heard me talk about, any citizen without access, access to resources, and it's a step that individuals, you know, like, that resource. So, with all right in discourse, we have to stop thinking that coming to the commission meeting, and waiting to get through this, upon the coming, and people, we can be a part of the, of the government, there are other ways. We have to meet the community where they are, we have to start talking about, the community has to come to us. It is our responsibility as a city, as a commission, to go to the people.
Okay. And now we are achieving parallels and priorities. So, what would you like to make us contribute? Let's go back in to the just team.
Okay, I would be honest, I'm for the community, I'm for everybody in Lawrence, and that's the reason I'm running, to be able to focus on individuals, communities, breaking the communities together, making sure everybody is happy in their community as well. Uh, I am not that much of a broker, I'm more of a viewer. And so when I see things that are happening, the first thing I want to do is find a way to fix it. So, that's why I'm running with that. Both of you.
Um, I think the last four years, uh, working to Lawrence, what are friends and family launching into this, um, engagement, I don't believe Lawrence wants to return to the time of backredeals. I don't think Lawrence wants to return to the useful petroglyphics that threaten our heritage stability. You're the people that created our strategic plan, our downtown master plan, our joint strategic plan to gross houses, and some other things, and you need people who will find to stay on track to give you, when you've asked for, and to address and prioritize more needs, as opposed to the needs of special men and groups.
Thanks for coming today, I appreciate your chance to talk for one second, it's hard to get everything said in that very time, but I, I really see a lot of, to the ones I always have, that's why I sent you the next meeting, one, came back in nineteen ninety-eight, and then the, the fours, trying to help some forwards, some plans, and, and, and the programs that, that existing commissions put in place. Um, I'm a little bit of the existing commissioners, I try to create portable company relationships to people, I try not to lash out and try to be honest and discuss things, I, I, I think that's what's, like, safe move, source communication between commissioners, and communication between developer, that, and the only way to do that is to drop down your guard, stop worrying about who forces it, don't, stop worrying about what we can do to solve problems, so, cancel, to get out of the, 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 kind of studying it for years now, I've been worried about the reps of the communities that are on our, our sort of, and, and, I just can do over four hundred people that are now counted for in our community, that are in house of trans, that's over two hundred more than most last time it was. And I think that's something we need to talk about, and if we have an issue, and I want to move forward, creating a sort of solution to that problem, and, and it was developing. And I think, by the way, I just want to, I just wanted to appreciate the vote, did three votes, three of us are gonna have to sit together for four years. together for four more years to be elected. I think we should be there in kind of respect we know that you can do that on the left. So thanks for sitting here. I appreciate your time.
So I, I use this quote, a few times this weekend, I continue this to grow on this front of me. And it's in patience for victory, we are accused of these. And I feel like we are in a space right now, it's a league of fear and a lot of blame. You know, we can say it because of the pandemic, dot, dot, dot. And it's a little bit more than that. The pandemic culminated, a lot of things are starting at the mark of the media and now we're faced with the end of it. And that takes a different type of leadership. That takes a different type of condition. And so I still hope that Lawrence, we are, are there on someone else's, but the leadership for our communities. And I still say true to that to this day. And so what I want to remind everyone is that as we continue to live through this war, we want commissioners, we want a five level of positions who are wanting to move things forward, they're competing for every five minutes walks and fly. And that comes from having a relationship with the community, all of that kind of relationship that their local politics and policies pad with it with the state level and on the federal. And so I know that, and if I enjoy, um, share it with everyone because it's a unique background. I've been, every moment of this days can have a different capacity. All that I've noticed that, all that I've put those all together, when we have a community among great things, kind of, that comes with understanding the relationship with the community and understanding your relationship that it has with policy. So again, I'd be more than hard to be here to be sharing. Thank you.
Growing up, grandpa was a role model to me that is always telling us, pay attention, look over there, see that, see how that practice over there, see that. It's always , I mean, just when it's getting our attention, it's popping us aside ahead. And as I grew and joined the military, went to war in Iraq, served U2s over there, came back, we learned and understand how to keep your eyes on the big picture and not give it to shit when things are getting tough. And in these same situations where all of us had to keep cool heads and continue on with the mission. And as a city commissioner, talking about people who can do things different, a different perspective, I bring that. I also bring that I've been part of formulation of all the plans she talked about. I contributed to every one of the currently part of the affordable housing, what we're working with the street duty plan on, on the rest of home housing in this community. So I understand what we do as a policy to put together the work to make this happen in this town. I understand helping private apartments to build a building right now in this town and make this happen. I attend all of these meetings. I go to them. I'm able to give you my time to hear what you're saying firsthand. So you don't have to come to the city commission meeting. So you don't have to email here to text me. I'm already amongst you all right now, all the time. I want to represent you on the city commission. I think I can work both whoever gets elected because I think I'm a pretty kind of old guy. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you to all the candidates for this meeting and forum today. As a reminder, the last day of the vote did not begin with a meeting for the November 20 general election. Early voting begins on October eighteenth and October thirty-first is the deadline to reflect advanced ballot being mailed through. Now, we invite everyone to visit with the candidates, check their voting registration and learn more about the N W C T, Black Bird and Loud Flight. Out.